Welcome, everybody. It is a great day to be alive in the U.S. of A and on planet Earth. It is election night, Tuesday, November the third, six thirty, drum roll. So I guess probably in the next three hours, four hours, hopefully not the next three days or four weeks. Hopefully we'll know the result of our beautiful election that has taken place today. And so just want to say, hey, thank you so much for joining us. I know some of you probably got CNN or Fox News on the background. But turn those off. Let's dive in the word of God, because in the next hour, nothing's going to change on either one of those places anyway, so. God, God is good. If you're joining us for the first time, welcome. So thank you so much for joining us. We have our notes for tonight's study. They're posted on our website in PDF form. Our website is WhitestoneChurchTX.com, WhitestoneChurchTX.com. Feel free to go there. We are on Joshua eighteen and nineteen, so we're using much of the same notes as last week. I have added a couple new scriptures for tonight. But this will kind of wrap up our Joshua rabbit trail. And next week, we'll dive back into the actual book of Joshua. So I want to start off with this, as we study the book of Joshua. The Old Testament book of Joshua, in your Bible, is the physical conquest of promised land. Let me say it again, the physical conquest of the promised land. So the Jewish people were physically conquering or taking possession of the land that God gave them. The book of Revelation is the spiritual conquest of land, also likened with the book of Ephesians. So we'll kind of look in Ephesians tonight, we'll look some in Second Corinthians. But we're talking about spiritual conquering or spiritual taking of land tonight. One of the things that we've added on page two of your notes is a question and answer time. Because we're not live, or well, we're live, but because we're not interactive, we're not on a Zoom platform or Skype. The best way to do this is if you have some questions in regard to our topic tonight or other topics. Feel free to put those in your tool or post bar, post them there. Comment section, that's the word I'm looking for, post them in the comment section. Stacy, my beautiful bride, is behind the scenes and she's scanning your comments. Or on our notes, I put my email address, I'll look at my phone every now and then. But you can email me a question, or you can put it in the comments there, and I will do my best to answer those questions. And so you can do that during the Bible study. And if it's relevant in the middle of the Bible study, I know some of you are going to start posting who's going to win the election and all that. So you know, don't ask tough questions, just throw me some softballs tonight. But so anyways, throw those out and we'll get started. So thank you so much for joining us. Father, we ask for your blessing tonight, God. We ask for your blessing on our nation. We ask for your blessing on our lives. We ask for your blessing, God, on our president. We ask for your blessing on Joe Biden and his camp, God, that you would rule and reign tonight. That, God, your kingdom come, your will be done as we navigate through this process. And that, Father, that your hand would be on us, and that, God, that we would humble ourselves before you, in Jesus' name and everybody's sin. So as we look at the topic tonight, we're gonna kind of dig into the return of Christ. Jesus destroys armies of the world fighting him is my little definition on your front page, Revelation nineteen. So if you have your scripture, turn to Revelation nineteen. And we want to kind of compare the condition of the land before the return of Christ. Now, I want to delineate between the return of Christ and the rapture. The return of Christ is the day of judgment. The return of Christ is not a good day on planet Earth. The return of Christ is when God, Jesus himself, comes on a white horse and destroys with the sword of his mouth all opposition. He is at that point judged the earth, no different than when God judged Egypt. Pharaoh hardens his heart. On the tenth plague, playtime was over. The firstborn of all people who did not have the blood of the lamb on their doorposts. The firstborn of all male children and offspring of animals. Anybody that did not have the blood of the lamb over the doorpost in Egypt. On the night that the death angel came, every firstborn died if the blood wasn't there. It was judgment time. The return of Christ is a time of judgment. The return of Christ is not a time, this is different than the rapture. The rapture is a time where God raptures his people. The return, he is going to war against those who have hardened their hearts towards him. Now, the timing of the rapture and all that is irrelevant at this moment. But in Revelation nineteen, when Jesus is returning, he is now judging the earth. So we need to liken this return and what scripture says about it to the days before the flood of Noah. In Matthew twenty-four, and it's in your notes, and Matthew twenty-five, these are the Olivet Discourse or the sermon on the Mount of Olives, that Jesus is talking to his best friends, his disciples, answering the question, hey, when will you return? What will your return be like? Talk to us about the end of time. So Jesus starts to lay out to them a plan, a outline, a summary, if you will. He sprinkles in there warnings and encouragements, and he gives parables about the fig tree. He gives parables about ten virgins and their oil lamps. He gives parables about a master that gives talents and goes away and comes back. He gives these parables, these stories, not to entertain us, but to teach us and to warn us. And so this return moment, we need to look at when Jesus says, hey, listen, the return of Christ will be likened to the days of Noah. Now, we've talked a lot in these teachings about the world before Noah. But I want to kind of just recap again tonight the importance of this. When we are looking at the scripture, we got to be careful that we don't look at it from an evolution mindset or an evolution process. We've all been raised in school systems and in culture, in movies, entertainment. You can't go almost anywhere or watch anything, and it starts talking about the age of the earth, where it's a evolution, where it's not an evolution mindset. I remember, for those of you that grew up in Austin, Inner Space Caverns out in Georgetown. The last time I went to Inner Space Caverns, my children were young, and we may have been on a field trip, or we may have just gone there as a family. But I'll never forget, they take you down this little trolley car, you go beneath IH thirty-five outside of Georgetown. You're going to explore the caverns. And I'll never forget, I had been in other caverns before, I've been in other places. And all the photos on the wall about stalactites and stalagmites and all the scientific information says billions and billions of years these formations have taken form, and billions and billions of years, as man evolved. He once lived in these caves as a monkey or an ape man, and now he is carrying a briefcase and lives, you know, on Wall Street. Look at how man has evolved from ape to human, these different things. I'll never forget visiting Inner Space Cavern, and you took the trolley down. I haven't been there in probably fifteen or twenty years, but in the nineties, the last time I was there, they had a recording. They turn off all the lights, and at that location, they play a verbal discourse about in the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth, and they just start quoting Genesis one. And I'll never forget going, man, this is awesome. We're down here at this really neat cavern, and the owners are telling us about creation. When we look at scripture, here's my point. Evolution teaches us that we started dumb or ignorant, and we have evolved into very intelligent, superior beings. The Bible comes at it absolutely opposite. If Jesus says black, the devil says white. If Jesus says good, the devil says bad. If God says bad, the devil says good. In the scripture, it says, hey, listen, as we get closer to the return of Christ, men will call good things bad and bad things good. We see that, all in our culture. We see that a baby in a mama's belly is all of a sudden bad if it's inconvenient to have that child. We see that it is good to glorify greed and power and dominance and selfishness and pride and call it stardom of an athlete, but we call it bad when somebody shows kindness and goodness and humility. We've got a lot of things backwards. But in this mindset, before the flood of the world, in the Bible, Genesis chapter six talks about the flood, starts the beginning of the flood. The earth was about two thousand years of age at that time. When Adam and Eve lived in the garden, according to the Bible, the best that I can recollect or guess, the best that I can kind of glean from scripture, Adam and Eve could have lived in the garden for about eighty-five years before they sinned. Somewhere about year eighty-five, based upon the birth date and the age of Cain and Abel and Seth, you can go do the math yourself. Somewhere in there, because Adam is like a hundred and twenty when Seth is born, somewhere around eighty-five, ninety, Adam and Eve are probably expelled from the garden. It could have been sooner, it could have been a few years later. But for two thousand years, man is outside the garden of Eden. Now, Adam is told, hey, listen, you can't return to the garden, Genesis chapter three. Adam and Eve, because you've sinned, you believe that you can now choose what's right and what's wrong. When Adam and Eve ate from the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. It wasn't that tree, now, all of a sudden, they're like God and they can understand and grasp things, no? What it meant was Adam and Eve wanted to be like God, and they believed that they could make judgment calls the same as God, that they could actually judge between what's good and what's evil. God says, hey, listen, the only person that can decipher what's good and evil is God himself. So therefore, we have to follow God's law so that we don't call something evil good or something good evil. So when Adam and Eve are expelled from the garden, we have to grasp this concept that Adam and Seth and the lineage lined out in Genesis five, and even Cain himself, these are the most brilliant minds on planet Earth. Their ability to grasp and understand physics, understand creation, understand medicine, understand geography, the upper stratosphere of our, you know, of our, I just lost myself. But they understood, it's escaping, they understood science. They understood the formations of the sun and the moon, the stars, astronomy is the word I'm looking for. They grasped that better than we could ever grasp it. Their minds were not corrupt, like our minds are corrupt. And when I say corrupt, I don't mean by evil, I just mean by the inability to process, recall, understand, grasp, learn, obtain. The mental ability of their minds were far superior than ours. The mental or the physical abilities of their bodies were far superior than ours. So for two thousand years before the flood, the earth itself was not as in bad shape as it is today. The earth is not, you know, one of the biggest lies that we send our kids is that we have destroyed our earth. Now, I'm not for pollution, I'm not for littering. I am stating that the earth is falling apart because it has now been under the curse of sin for at least six thousand years. This has great effects on our climate, on the physicalness of our world. So for the first two thousand years, this is what I'm trying to say, before the flood, we know that angels have come to the earth. We know that angels have set themselves up as gods. We know, and when I say angels, I mean fallen angels, let me preface that, fallen angels have come to earth. Fallen angels have set themselves up to be gods on the earth. Fallen angels have far superior intellect than even the humans did at that time. Fallen angels taught mankind sexual perversion. They taught mankind the art of war or the destruction of war. They taught mankind how to enhance occultic magic practice and tap into dark forces, if you will, the supernatural. The earth at this time is populated, but it is populated with a corrupt mindset. And the Bible says in Genesis six that the earth, everybody on the earth, they're continuously thinking of evil. And so before the flood, the world is under the dictatorship of these fallen angels. One of those fallen angels may have been Lucifer himself, pulling the strings in front of or behind, we don't really know. But we do know that the world is following the system and the mandates and the morals and the ethics of hell itself. We know that there is a remnant of eight people, only eight out of millions of people that are following God. We know that the bloodline of Jesus is preserved in Genesis chapter five. The bloodline is ten generations deep from Adam to Noah. We know that God rescues his people to keep intact his word and his bloodline through this built ark, through the boat. Now, before the judgment, the judgment at that time was rain for forty days, forty nights. Noah's on the ark for at least a year. It takes that long for the waters to subside, his boat rests on Mount Eriat. And so we know that pre-flood, the world is corrupt. The world is following the mandates of hell. The world is worshiping false gods. The world is believing that these false gods will lead them to victory. The world is mocking this guy named Noah, this preacher who preaches in vain. He doesn't preach in vain, the word of God doesn't return void, but nobody responds to his message for a hundred and twenty years. It looks bad for a hundred and twenty years. We have to take that mindset, that understanding, and put it at the days before the return of Christ. Now, the return of Christ, he will show up. The question or the point that I want us to think about, will fallen angels be on the earth again before the return of Christ? Are fallen angels infiltrating society today? Are fallen angels pulling the strings of what we call entertainment, what we call education, what we call politics, what we call war, what we call sexual interaction, what we call acceptable? Are there fallen spirits, fallen angels behind the scenes, pulling the strings, if you will, teaching us things, using people? Are they still here infiltrating? In Revelation nineteen, the return of Christ comes, and the return of Christ, at this point, the world following the Antichrist believes that they can win against Jesus. They believe they can win against his army. They believe that they can make war against God. Now, before we just throw that out and say, oh, that's hogwash, those people are crazy, they're idiots. What gives them this ability to believe it is what I want us to really think about it. Will there be Nephilim on the earth before the return of Christ? Will there be what we consider superior life forms on the earth before the return of Christ? Will we be following a dictator that is called in scripture the Antichrist, but we may call him supreme leader or something very different because he makes himself out to be an angel of light? What will the world be like that will cause it to unify? Everybody on the earth will be unified in war against Jesus Christ at the Battle of Armageddon. What will be the cause of that? That's what this whole study's been about. That's what I want you to research your scripture about. That's what I want you to not get lulled to sleep with just basic theology that just says, well, you know, it's all about going to heaven and one day I'll die, and one day Jesus will rapture me, and I don't have to worry about what's going to happen because I won't be here. I really want you to fight against that mindset. I really want you to war against that, because what I believe is Satan is taught a false gospel, even to the church that is putting us to sleep, where we think that it doesn't really matter what we do. That mindset, just because it's a political season tonight, that mindset is the same mindset. It says, well, it doesn't really matter if I vote, because God's going to do what he wants to do, and God's in control, no matter who the president is. Well, that may be true, but for us to not have our say-so, for us not to put our vote in is not giving or handling the talent that God's given us well. That's the same thing that Jesus talks about in Matthew twenty-five. Hey, look, I gave you a talent to use that to save the world, but you had this idea that, oh, it doesn't really matter because God's going to save who he wants to save anyways, or God's going to do what he wants to do anyways. I want us to war against those mindsets that put us to sleep against our responsibility. I know that's a lot, but that's where we're at. So let's go to Revelation nineteen, and let's look at verse eleven. And we left off here last time, then I saw heaven opened up and behold, a white horse. And he who sat on him was called faithful and true, and in righteousness he judges and makes war. So Jesus is going to do two things, he's going to judge and he's going to make war. Now, is he doing that today? The answer is yes. Jesus is judging our hearts right now, if we'll let him. He'll judge our pride, he'll judge our greed, he'll judge our perversion, and then he's going to make war against those things in your life. So some of the struggles that we go through, we can blame it on Corona, we can blame it on our ex-spouse, we can blame it on our boss at work or Donald Trump, or, you know, our neighbor down the street that is, you know, reporting us to the HOA every day. We can blame some things on other people, or what we do in the church is we always blame it on the devil. Oh, the devil's attacking me. Well, what happened? Oh, man, I got four speeding tickets on the way to church today. Well, I don't know that the devil's attacking you, maybe you were just speeding, and God's saying, hey, slow down, idiot. I don't, you know, I don't want you to die, but it's not always the devil, it's not always something else. Sometimes it's the Lord himself warring against that thing that will destroy you. Because if you live a life where you are a criminal and you never get caught, you may go, wow, I'm a really good criminal, I'm really lucky. Well, you're going to get worse and worse and worse, and you're going to die in your crime. Better to get caught and get convicted and get judged, and God go to war against your criminal mind and your criminal activity so that you'll repent and get saved than for you to live a life of criminal activity and never get caught. Better that you get judged now, on this side of eternity, where you have the opportunity to take your case to the cross and be forgiven, even though you're guilty, than for you to die and be judged on the other side of eternity and pay the price for your sin. See, that's the difference between a Christian. A Christian and a non-Christian, we're both going to be judged, but the Christian is saying, judge me now so that I can have my case forgiven. A non-Christian says, well, judge me later, if you really exist, and I'll pay the price, and I'll go to hell. I was listening to the radio just this morning, and a guy in a joking manner, talking about a sports thing, says, well, I'll go to hell for this one, and you'll probably join me, and he's making a joke about going to hell. And it's like, dude, hell, if you really understood hell, you would never joke that it's a place that anybody should or wants to go, or that it's just going to be, you know, a holiday down below. It is a place built for Satan and his angels, not mankind. So Jesus makes war, in righteousness he judges. Verse twelve, his eyes are like a flame of fire, and on his head are many crowns. He has a name written that no one knows except for himself. He's clothed with a robe dipped in blood, that's the cross, that's his clothing. You'll know who Jesus is. He's going to wear a robe dipped with blood, and you're going to go, oh, man, that's the blood. His name is called the Word of God. So Jesus is the Word of God. Jesus says, God says, the Bible says, in your mouth is the power of life and depth. Your words have the ability to create, your words have the ability to restore life, your words have the ability to damn or to crucify or to judge or to condemn somebody. Jesus says, listen, I'm the Word of God. So if you call yourself a Christian, are you speaking the Word of God or the word of the devil? Are you speaking the Word of God, are you reading the Word of God, or just the word of man, just the word of religion? Verse thirteen, or verse fourteen. And the armies in heaven clothed in fine linen, that's the bride of Christ. That fine linen is the Holy Spirit, it's the righteousness of Christ. The armies in heaven clothed with linen, white and clean, followed him on white horses. Now, I personally believe, this is you and I, this is the angels of heaven, but it's also the redeemed saints, the redeemed body of Christ, that we're not necessarily going to go to war ourself. We're just on his team, we're his hype men, we're his hype, you know, we're just supporting him. He's the one going to battle, he doesn't need our help, we just get to go with him. Verse fifteen, now out of his mouth goes a sharp sword that he should strike down the nations. Now, the nations, in other parables and other stories, Jesus says, I'll divide the nations between the goat nations and the sheep nations. I'm going to come in and divide those who are following me and those who are not following me. And he himself will rule them with a rod of iron. He himself treads the winepress of the fierceness of the wrath of Almighty God. He has on his robe and his thya name written, King of kings, Lord of lords. And I saw an angel, verse seventeen, standing in the sun, and he cried with a loud voice, saying to all the birds that fly in the midst of heaven, come and gather together for the supper of the great God. In other words, hey, listen, Jesus shows up, he's just kind of sitting there, is how I envision this, and angel comes down and says, hey, all you birds of the air, all you buzzards, all you flesh-eating birds, get ready, you're fixing to have the dinner of the lifetime. Get ready, because Jesus is about to go to war. Verse eighteen, that you may eat the flesh. Now, here's where I really want you to read what verse eighteen says. This is who Jesus is going to war against, that you may eat the flesh of kings, plural. Now, we know at this time that the world will be divided into ten regions underneath the Antichrist. The world itself will not have three hundred and sixty-eight plus independent nations or countries like it does right now. They will be united under ten different regions, and the U.S. will be included in one of those regions. It may be the North American region, it may be the U.S. is a region of its own. We may not even be really called the United States of America anymore, we don't really know. But we know maybe the European nations will all be led under one of these ten nations. We understand that the world will be divided into ten groups led by Satan himself, the Antichrist, the incarnate of Satan inside of a man. Verse eighteen, Jesus goes to war against the flesh of kings, the flesh of captains, the flesh of mighty men. So in your Bible, if you have a New King James, you need to highlight that, if you have a King James. If you have a different version, it may have a different wording for this. But these mighty men, these aren't just strong people. That same wording is used of the Nephilim in Genesis chapter six. In Genesis chapter six, it says, the sons of God, which are fallen angels, come and have sex with earthly women. And their offspring are the Nephilim, the mighty men of renown, the mighty men of old. Now, that reference mighty men is used duly in scripture. On one hand, it is talking about the Nephilim or the offspring of this union, this co-mingling of fallen angels and earthly women. The second place that it's used is in regard to David's mighty men that are in David's, David who killed Goliath, King David. He has a group of mighty men, but the breakdown is very, very different. In this reference, this mighty men, could this be a reference to the Nephilim? Could this be a reference? A reference to the interjection of, of. Uh, angel DNA into human beings. At the return of Christ. Could this be what we could be seeing right now in twenty twenty? If Satan is gonna infiltrate. The world today. He's not going to bring ten foot tall giants. That are easily spotted this time. Now he may down the way bring something that's very unique and I, and, and I do believe that what we. Uh, call aliens or what we call other life form. Are not little green men from Mars, but these are. These are fallen angels, these are demonic spirits. That are making themselves look like something else that we may be fooled. But when we look at this Revelation nineteen. And Jesus comes back, he's going to war against kings, captains, and now mighty men. The question that I really want you to consider is what is it going to take? For the king or the leader of the, uh, North American region? What's it gonna take for the leader of the, of the Asian region? What's it gonna take for the? The leader that's over the European nation of? This end time governmental rule, what? What is going to have to happen for us to think? That we can fight against Jesus himself? Two things will have to happen, one. We will not recognize Jesus as God, we will recognize him as a defeatable foe. The same thing happened at the Tower of Babel. Read Babel, Genesis ten and eleven. They believe they can build a tower that will reach heaven. Now it's not talking about a tower that's like fifteen miles tall. It's talking about that they can, that they can create a race, a city. A tower that they can tap into occultic. Spirituality and defeat God himself. They truly believe that the Tower of Babel. They could overthrow God. They will truly believe in Revelation nineteen. That they can overthrow the son of God, Jesus Christ coming to defeat them. Something has to happen. Whether it is a superior weapon, which. You know, I don't think too many people believe that a nuclear bomb. Uh, or warhead can defeat Jesus or God himself. But they have, something has to happen. For the world to go to war against Jesus. I really want you to think about that. It's not just a bunch of crazy idiots that are just going, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna die for the devil, we love Satan, six, six, six. No, this mark of the beast, this end time culture. This beast system. Something will show up, something will happen. Will it be some life form from another planet? That the world will call aliens, but the Bible will call fallen angels. Could it be superior technology that the Antichrist? Through, uh, uh, um, infiltrating science and infiltrating, um, you know, uh. The, the systems of the world. With Nephilim who are smarter than we are or who are. Superior than we are in their intellect because they come from a different realm than we do. Can these angels infiltrate our realm? Now I know some of you are saying Cameron has lost his mind. What's he talking about aliens, what's he talking about the second coming? This is what I'm saying. All through scripture, we talked about this before, angels are. Considered to look like men. Angels are always in scripture, when an angel shows up. Many times people fall on their face and start to worship the angel. Many times they don't even realize it's an angel until after that angel tells them something specific. Sometimes this person. Is there, and then when they get the message, they're like, oh, my God, this is an angel. Sometimes we don't realize that we're in the region of angel activity. Such as Jacob when he lays his head on a rock. And he has a dream of angels ascending and descending. And he says, I didn't know this was holy ground. That's not just verbiage, that meant wherever that rock was, wherever he built that. That altar to Bethel, he says, I, I'm gonna worship here, this is Bethel, this is the place of God. Well, whatever, wh- wh- wherever that physical place is. Today still, that's a spiritual entrance and exit point. For the angelic realm. All through scripture. Angels look like men, when they go into Sodom and Gomorrah, the men of the town went to rape the men. Who are there to pull Lot and his family out. They don't know they're angels. If they had big wings and they're seven feet tall and they're glowing white. And they go, oh, and they got like a gold sash across their, across their chest. The men of the town would not have thought, oh, we could, we could, uh, overtake them and do what we want to them. No, those angels appeared as normal men. So if holy angels from Samson's mom to the, to, uh, mother, uh, Mary. Uh, the, the mother of Jesus. To, uh, Sodom and Gomorrah. To, uh, all through scripture, the angel that shows up to Daniel who fastes for, who's fasting for twenty one days. If these angels can show up. And many times, men and women of the Bible start to worship them until that angel says, don't worship me. I'm just a messenger, I'm just here on holy assignment. If in Hebrews it says, beware how you treat strangers. Lest you entertain an angel. If we could just spot angels just like that, if they couldn't blend in. Then, then we wouldn't have an argument, but scripture builds this case. That angels can blend into society, that angels could look just like your coworker. Just like the homeless guy, just like the rock star, just like the politician. And if angels can infiltrate our society. And the ones that are unholy. Can receive worship. And they love power, positions of power. And they love to be identified as superior and the best, if they can be. Used to teach us morality. Teach us things. That are not used for the glory of God. But used to, to, um, uh, uh, bring forth. The wickedness of the enemy. If, if that happens in scripture in the past. We're fools if we don't believe that it's happening in twenty twenty. Now, much of our entertainment. Glorifies things like vampires. And things like werewolves and things like zombies and things like aliens. Much of this, what we would call science fiction. Much of it is make believe and much of it is, is, you know, uh, uh, somebody's creative imagination, whether it's good or bad. But there is a base for all of it. Our Greek mythology. When we, with some, some Greek guy didn't just go out and write this mythology. There was a base for it, I'm not saying it's all true. But I'm saying there's a base for, for this mythology, that, that Zeus. Uh, and Gaia, that, that there's this god. And that there's this, you know, uh, uh, that he can sleep with women on the earth. That's not just created in Greek mythology, that comes from. The sources that are, are from our Bible. And so it's this retelling of a story. It's this replaying of, of things. There's nothing new under the sun, there's no new. Pattern of Satan, there's no new thing, he just redresses it. So my argument through this whole series for the last. You know, twelve, uh, uh, times together. Is, is that, listen. Satan is coming with full force to deceive us. He will use fallen angels to do that. He will use demons to do that. He will use our own sin nature to do that. If we don't believe that Satan has infiltrated our education system. We're just deceiving ourselves. If we don't believe. That fallen angels have infiltrated our entertainment. Infiltrated our business, infiltrated our politics. Infiltrated the UN, the United, you know, the working of nations. If we don't believe that there's not. Some hi- uh, um, satanic. Involvement. And I don't just mean on a spiritual level, I mean on a tangible level also. We have to believe. That what happened before the flood. May have just been a different version than what's happening before the return of Christ. If before the flood Noah's. Uh, neighbors and his counterparts were worshiping fallen angels in the flesh. Calling them different names that we still know pagan deities are called that today. If they were calling them and worshiping them and offering their, their daughters to marry them. Out of an honor, out of a, out of a status of power and position. Then we are, we are not wise if we don't believe that same thing happening today. And that's why when Jesus comes back. He will find a force from earth. That is not just a bunch of humans with an M sixteen and, and some grenades and. Nuclear warheads trying to, to fight Jesus. It will be that Satan has infiltrated us and said, hey, listen. This guy over here, this group over here, they've got power. They've got the ability to manipulate. Physical realms. And supernatural realms to defeat Satan or defeat Jesus. This same thing happened in Egypt with Moses. Moses goes before Pharaoh, let's remind, remember this story. Moses goes before Pharaoh, I just read this the other day. In my own reading. Didn't put these two together yet. Moses goes before Pharaoh in Egypt. And he throws down his staff. Jesus, God says, Moses, when you go before Pharaoh, you say, let my people go. And he said, Moses says, well, he ain't gonna listen to me, he says, well, throw your staff on the ground. And when you throw your staff on the ground, it'll turn into a snake. So Moses does it in the desert before he meets Pharaoh. And God says, now pick up the snake by the tail, which you never do. And the snake turns back into his staff. So God says, I'm with you, Moses. Now this isn't a made up story, this is reality. So Moses goes before the most powerful man of his time. And he says, Pharaoh, let my people go. Now this is plague one, that, Pharaoh's like, who the heck are you? Oh, you're my old, uh, uh, stepbrother. What are you doing back here? Forty years later. I should kill you. So Moses throws his staff down before Pharaoh. His staff turns into a snake. Pharaoh's, uh, Moses is going, yeah, this is great. Now hear what happened. Pharaoh's magicians. Do the same thing. They say, oh, we know that trick. Well, one, we didn't think it was a trick, we think it's a miracle from God. But the magicians in Pharaoh's court says, hey, look at these sticks, so they bring out sticks. They throw sticks on the ground, their sticks turn into snakes. Then Moses's snake eats their snakes. That's what your Bible says. To show dominance. Well, Pharaoh's not really impressed with that. He's just thinking, well, this Moses guy knows some magic tricks that my guys don't know. And when I say magic tricks, I don't mean, uh, smoke and mirrors, I mean occultic magic. Then, then he calls down the first plague. Well, then the next plague, and I may get these backwards, the next plague is the plague of frogs. Moses says, Pharaoh, let my people go, or frogs will possess the land. Well, in your Bible, it says, Pharaoh's magicians also called forth frogs from the Nile River. So how are they doing these? These same things that we're calling plagues? How are they doing it? Because they have occultic power. That same thing is happening before the return of Christ. It's happening today. That is exactly what Hitler in the forties was after, Hitler was into great deep occultism. Great deep witchcraft. There is a lot of evidence to show the dark side. Uh, of occultism in, in Hitler and Hitler's inner, inner circles. It has infiltrated our entertainment. If you don't believe half of what I'm saying. Start to look at what Hollywood is producing. Start to look what a lot of our comics. And a lot of our, uh, so-called superheroes. Look back at where do they get their power? For example, Thor and Thor's hammer. That is, that is old stories about how Thor's hammer could break through anything. Well, he was gonna break through the dome to get into the presence of God to destroy God. These, these are not just made up things. These are what is gonna happen before the return of Christ. I am way off my notes. But I just wanna say to you, look again at verse eighteen. The flesh of kings. The flesh of captains. The flesh of mighty men. These mighty men, my argument are not just strong guys that are warriors and, and military guys. These will be the Nephilim that are, are here in times. This will be Satan's army. This will be Satan's infiltration. Of governmental and earthly systems. To have the audacity to war against Jesus Christ. I don't think the most hardened military guy out there. Thinks that he can really defeat Jesus on a white horse. The second part to that is the dumbing down of who Jesus really is. Jesus won't return as a baby in a major, he will return as a warrior on a white horse. Defeating his foes, can I get an amen? Um, I'm gonna ask Stacy if we have any questions. I'll, I'll just take a, a, a brief break right here. If you have any questions that you wanna email or that are posted in our comment lines. Uh, she'll, she'll give them to me, so if you have any questions, let me know. Okay. Um, let's pick up on our last point. Uh, our last point is, uh, Ephesians six, so go to Ephesians chapter six. And let's just look at the return of Christ. Ephesians chapter six. Verse ten. And it's in our notes, sorry, Ephesians chap- chapter six is on. Page three of your notes under the deception. And here is, we'll read Ephesians six and, and second Corinthians ten. Ephesians chapter six, verse ten. It says this, verse ten, finally, my brethren. Be strong in the Lord and in the power of his might. Put on the whole armor of God that so, so that you will be able to stand. Against the schemes of the devil. For we do not wrestle. Against flesh and blood. But against principalities. So in your own research. Look up what is the principality, what is the principle? What are the principles? That are warring against us, they're not flesh and blood. So where are these principles or where are these principalities coming from? Ephesians six gives us great insight into this supernatural realm. Please hear me when I say this. The supernatural realm is infiltrating the physical realm. When Jesus walked in and he healed a blind person. When he healed a deaf person. When Jesus cast out demons. That was the supernatural realm of heaven. Coming into the earthly realm of man. That had already been influenced or attacked by the supernatural realm of hell. That was bringing destruction into somebody's life. Let me say it again like this. When a man comes to Jesus and said, hey, Jesus. Your disciples couldn't cast this demon out of my boy. My boy throws himself into the fire and convulses. Jesus says, well, how long's he been doing this? He says, since birth. And Jesus says, oh, this kind, this kind of demon, this kind of spirit. Only comes out by prayer and fasting. So when Jesus says that, what Jesus diagnoses is this. We have a physical boy, a human being. Born on planet earth. In, in, uh, ancient, uh, Jer- Jerusalem in, in the year thirty or so. That is being possessed by a supernatural entity that comes from. The resources or the realm of hell. Jesus comes on the scene. And he says, okay, we have a physical boy. That is influenced by a spiritual demon. Let me bring supernatural spiritual power of heaven and authority from heaven. And cast the demon out of the boy. This is the collision of. Physical and the supernatural. So when it says that we have, we wrestle against flesh and blood. Against these principalities. The principalities is the infiltration of. Hell into physical earth. Stacy's handing me a, a, a statement, just a second. Uh, and against the powers. The rulers of darkness of this age. Spiritual hosts of wickedness in heavenly places. This verse twelve in Ephesians chapter six. Will play itself out before the return of Christ. It's already playing itself out. But the principalities, the authorities, the rulers of darkness. Spiritual hosts of wickedness. Will play itself out on planet earth. Controlling, influencing, manipulating man to do the will of Satan. Um, here's a question. Uh, from somebody that I love. Um, here's a question uh from somebody that I love very dearly, is this from Sweet Lou Jean? Okay. Uh, do you believe our world is battling the spirit of Antichrist? Is all, okay, do you believe our world is already battling the spirit of Antichrist which you have heard is coming and is already in the world, first John four thirty? Lou Jean, great question, the answer is absolutely. Absolutely, since the day that first John was written. Now, first John was written by John who wrote Revelation. This is the same John that was at the cross with Jesus and Jesus on his dying breath says, hey, John, take care of Mary, my mother. He says, John, this is your mother and mother, this is your son. So in other words, Jesus being the eldest's responsibility was to take care of his mother because obviously Joseph is already dead. This is the same John that is one of Jesus's best friends. This same John, when he wrote this, wrote this around seventy A.D. or so, some thirty or forty years after the the resurrection of Jesus Christ. So when John wrote this, he says, hey, listen, the Antichrist spirit is already in the world. Now, what that means is Satan does not know the day or the year or the time that Jesus will return. He doesn't know when the when the tribulation will start, he doesn't know when the rapture will take place and he doesn't know when the return of Christ will take place. So since uh the death, burial and resurrection of Jesus for the last two thousand years, Satan has always had to have an Antichrist person ready to possess when the rapture comes or when he sees the second coming of Christ. So what we know about the rapture and what we know about the Antichrist spirit is that there is an Antichrist spirit in the world. An Antichrist spirit is one that says there are multiple ways to God. An Antichrist spirit says, hey, listen, by the way, you're God. Oh, you know what, that guy over there is God. You know what, there's several ways to God. Antichrist is not anti-Jesus. The person, the Antichrist, will say, oh, I love Jesus, I accept Jesus. He is a way, one way, or an option to heaven. The word Christ means Messiah, Savior and way. So when we put the word Jesus together with the word Christ, we're saying Jesus Savior, Jesus Messiah, Jesus the way. The Antichrist spirit will possess the Antichrist person and that Antichrist person will say, hey, listen, I am the way, I am the truth, I am the life. And oh, yes, all these other people came before me to prop me up and now worship me. The Antichrist spirit is alive and well twenty twenty. It's already infiltrating the church, it's infiltrating our hearts, it's infiltrating every aspect of our culture to to get us to believe or to receive the Antichrist himself. Last point on this, that's why in nineteen forty-three, when Hitler was in his heyday, uh many Christians were right to suspect, hey, Hitler may be the Antichrist. All signs pointed to Hitler being the Antichrist. The problem was, it wasn't time, Jesus says, not yet. So Hitler obviously is a man and is gonna die, so now Satan's gotta start on somebody else. He's always got somebody in the wings waiting to play the part of the one-world leader that's filled with Satan himself. I hope that answered the question, the next question. Ephesians, Ephesians, chapter six, verse twelve, from Moline Spock. Can you explain heavenly places and the meaning? Okay, Ephesians, chapter six, verse twelve, we do not wrestle against flesh and blood, but against principalities, powers, rulers of darkness of this age, against spiritual hosts of wickedness in heavenly places. That word heavenly places means spiritual realm. It's in the spiritual realm, the hosts of wickedness uh are are spiritually operating. When we talk about heavenly realms, there are territories, just as we would divide up our United States into fifty states. If I say to you, let's go to California, you think over here uh in the west. If I say, let's go to New York City, you think over here in the east. You know different regions, you think of different territories, different geographical descriptions, different climates, different everything. Spiritually, there are states and counties and countries and nations that are divided up spiritually. So heavenly places means that as Christians, just as we can cross a county line or a state line, we need to realize when we go different places in the physical, we go into different spiritual territories, heavenly places that are ruled by different entities. Um, so spiritually, that's why you'll see bars or strip clubs uh uh clustered in certain regions of a city or a territory. Because Satan is establishing in those heavenly places a corruption or the ability to to plant his his places. You will also see different, like we would say, the Bible Belt of America uh has much more churches and much more Christianity in it than other places that are not the Bible Belt. What we're really saying is, yes, there may per capita be more churches in this part of the United States, but we're saying there's a different feel in the heavenly place over here than there is over here. There's there's different regions spiritually, just as there's different regions in the physical. I hope that helped answer the question. Hey, listen, tonight's been deep, this whole study's been deep. I wanna say thank you so much for joining us. We're gonna pick back up in the book of Joshua, we'll 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 pretty much complete Joshua, the book in a couple sessions. We're gonna see the conquest of territory, just as we wanna see the conquest of territory in the spiritual realm today. God designed you to go take ground for him. Every person you lead to the to the Lord, you're gaining spiritual territory. Every message you preach, every person that you lay hands on and heal, every love, uh not love letter, but letter of love that you write to encourage somebody. Uh, some of you, God's gifted to be a pen pal to inmates in prison, some of you need to be pen pals uh and just make phone calls to people that are in places that can't be reached. Uh, some of you are called to go volunteer at orphanages, uh in children's homes, uh in children's hospitals, there's a ministry for you. You're not trapped to your home, you're not useless and God's not giving up on you. You are vital in the kingdom of God. God's called you to do something great. And as you go do what God's called you to do, you're gaining territory for the Lord, you're taking back ground that was stolen or lost. God's called us to go after that one sheep that left the pen, the ninety-nine. God leaves the ninety-nine to go get the one. The word of God is go get the word, go get the one this week that the Lord leads you to. Hey, God bless you, we'll see you next Tuesday. Uh, we'll be in the book of Joshua, actually, next week. God bless you, have a great week.